I'd like to call this special meeting of the Colrain Township Board of Trustees to order at 6 o'clock in the evening on Monday, March 16th, 2020. I'd ask that you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Shall I call the attendance?
Yes. Sure.
Mr. Raj Kapal.
Aye.
Mr. Rocker.
Here.
And Mr. Wallace.
Here. I'd ask that you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd ask that you stand for a moment of meditation and thankfulness that we've got a great group of competent people through all levels of government to handle anything that comes along, including this. And we are thankful to God for that. Amen. Please be seated. The purpose of our meeting tonight is to consider a resolution declaring a state of emergency due to COVID-19. And all that is, is a resolution to, for financial reasons, to make us eligible for any FEMA or other federal funding that would become available. And I guess to get that to the floor, we would need one of us to make a resolution or make a motion to bring that to the floor.
I'll motion to adopt the resolution declaring a state of emergency due to COVID-19.
I second it.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
If I may, I would like to start by asking Captain Shane Packer to come to the dais and provide a bit of an update on where things stand and provide some information that may be a helpful context for both you all but also the listening and viewing public at home.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello, Shane.
Thank you for having me speak this evening. We are truly in unprecedented times. We are seeing unprecedented mitigation measures in place to try and slow the spread of this COVID-19 virus. These unprecedented measures obviously raise a level of fear and anxiety, which is understandable. But please know that our township first responders, our public safety professionals are here, ready to respond to whatever may come. Here recently, the Ohio Department of Health announced that we have broad community spread. So this is something that needs to be taken very seriously by everyone at all levels within our community. The reason that they're saying that we have broad community spread is now that we have community transmissions and with the lack of testing kits, we can no longer rely on any of the data that we are seeing and any of the reporting that we are seeing on the news. The fact that we had a press release, you know, press conference a couple of weeks, a week ago, talking about we have four confirmed cases in Liberty Township, we cannot assume that it's only Liberty Township. This is something that this disease, this virus spreads somewhat quickly. Please know that 80% of the cases are mild, so a lot of times we can be asymptomatic for up to three or four days. This is something that of those 80% that are mild will only have maybe symptoms of fever or cough, but it's the other 20% that is very concerning. Well, that 20%, 15% have some serious complications and 5% have critical complications. The Department of Health today stated ages 65 or older, up to 15 times higher mortality rate. So this is something that is a very serious public health matter. If we look at our at-risk population, the elderly, 15% mortality rate for 80 and above, 8% mortality rate for 70 to 79. This is something that we have to take these mitigations measures very seriously in order to slow the spread of this virus. This is something that there are no other preventative measures in place other than these social distancing and mitigation measures. There is no vaccine. So this is something that they, you know, the goal with the flattening the curve, as you've seen, is to try to stretch this out to where the patient load is manageable at our hospital systems. If we start to see the infection rate, you know, 30%, 40% of the general population, this is something that we cannot, our hospitals and healthcare systems cannot keep up with. So this is something that is obviously a very serious matter. This is something that, you know, we operationally are planning to address this probably up to three months. We've seen that the CDC has updated their mass gathering guidance up to eight weeks. And we see these trends and we see that this is something that we are going to have to address as a community for at least those eight weeks, if not longer. This is something that from an EMS operations and a fire and operations standpoint, you know, we are facing a national shortage of supplies, personal protective equipment, and we are closely working with local and state authorities to try and hopefully free up some of the supplies for our EMS personnel, our fire personnel, first responders. But this is something that is very serious. This is something that we continue to address and the mitigation measures are key to the slow transmission of this virus. As Governor Dewine said earlier, this is a once-in-a-one-hundred-year crisis, so we have to come together. Some other things real quick before I turn it over, please know to the general public, if you experience signs and symptoms, those signs and symptoms mirror that of flu symptoms, but those signs and symptoms, cough, fever, shortness of breath, our dispatchers, our 911 call takers are screening these calls and trying to identify persons with these symptoms. So our personnel are donning those additional personal protective equipment in terms of a mask, goggles, potentially an isolation gown to protect not just ourselves but everyone. We want to minimize that exposure. So to our residents, it's important that if you experience mild symptoms, CDC and public health recommend that you contact your primary care physician. If you're experiencing a medical emergency, you know, please call 911 as you would and provide detailed report of your symptoms so that way we can appropriately don our protective personal, protective equipment. With that, you know, we are very much involved with the Greater Cincinnati Disaster Preparedness Coalition, and so our hospitals are taking very swift and aggressive measures as far as deploying treatment tents outside of their facilities. You may have seen some of that on the news. They have very strict visitor policies now. Many now, you know, no visitors or visitors, if any, are going in and out one door. So this is something that as a community, obviously is very serious. We are ready and we will do this together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Steve Khan, I'd like to hear your comments as we consider this resolution also. Part of the emergency management training is, is that every local government body would have a PIO or a Public Information Officer, and in our training chart, that would be Steve Khan. And if you could introduce yourself to a lot of people that have never met you before.
Sure. My name's Steve Khan. I've been with Colrain Fire for about 30 years. Been in the fire service for 35 years as a paramedic, as a firefighter, most recently as a battalion chief on one of our unit days. I also have some medical training in my background. I'm also a registered nurse. I've been a registered nurse for about 30 years as well. Still practice in critical care nursing, so there's some of my background. Thank you for having me come up here tonight to give you an overview of what we're trying to do. You just heard Captain Packer. Captain Packer is representative of the kind of people that we have working for Colrain Township. When we have our staff that can throw these kinds of statistics together and feed that information to me to get that information out to the public, you know, we are, I think that just demonstrates the kind of programs that we run here at Colrain and the kind of personnel that we have. My job, what I am planning on doing here during this state of emergency is get the information out to our public through our various means, through our social media feeds, Facebook, Twitter, through our Circle publication that we have, through email chains. We are pulling people in from our faith-based organizations, the Colrain Chamber of Commerce, getting this information out so then they can get it out to their mail list. We're also going to be doing print media as well, so some people that may not follow us electronically will still be able to get that information. We are working hand in hand with the Hamilton County Emergency Management Agency, the Greater Cincinnati Health Collaborative, Hamilton County Department of Public Health, and Ohio Department of Public Health. So all the information that we have coming out from our location will be vetted information and from the professionals. You know, we fight fires and that's our bailiwick. You know, when something like this happens, we get our information from the professionals, from the scientists, from the doctors, the people on the front lines of this research. So we get our information from CDC, Ohio Department of Health, and we funnel all this so we can get that out to our constituents and our masses here. So what we're going to be doing is we're going to be using our platforms here. The first one that we will use is the Colrain Fire Facebook page, and the reason for that is we have the most followers on that page. From there, we will transfer that information to the township's Facebook and then through our other social media like Twitter and things of that nature. At the same time, we'll be pushing the information onto Circle and taking every opportunity to get on the radio to reassure our people that what we have going on is that we're on top of things. We plan on getting our administration involved. We live in a really vibrant community. We're really excited that our personnel are involved in the community. Our communities are, they're going to help each other out, and I think that's one of our main messages here is to, you know, just to reassure our personnel, reassure our community that we do have the right people in the right place to keep this somewhat manageable.
You know, Steve, one of the other things in the emergency management training classes that I've taken, and I reviewed all this information Sunday morning, is what you say about getting the message out. It's very critical that anyone watching realizes that Steve Khan speaks for the township on these issues related to this current COVID-19 that's going on. Other issues that don't involve that, you can go to the other department heads or whatever, but specific to this, we speak with one voice, and that is the voice of Steve Khan. It's, or his designate, but it's not the fire chief or the police chief or the trustees or the administrator. It's one voice and it's Steve Khan. That way, that is mentioned in that training also. It should be very clearly, you have to be very clear about delineating who that person is, and that is you.
All those people you just mentioned, they are, they are into their, you know, up to their eyes with coordinating and getting all these things going for us with budgeting and financing and all these things. They can't, we can't have them do it because
Right, well, it's you.
They're performing their functions. So I've trained for this. This is what I've been, been put in this position before to speak, and this is what I do.
Well, good luck with it. I know the role of the trustees is to monitor the finances of it, but it is your role to speak for the township. So I just want to be very clear to everybody that it is Steve Khan. If it's from him, it's good. If it's not from him, it's, it should be coming from him, so.
No pressure.
No, but you just have to speak with one voice, Steve.
That's what I appreciate.
And one of the other things in that training is it says you're going to be getting stuff from all over the place, and people need to believe one person, and that is you.
Absolutely.
So I think I've made that clear, so.
And that's the other part of it, is try and sift through the other reports that are coming out and making sure we're getting the factual information out.
Right, well, thank you, Stephen, and good luck with that. Is there any other discussion on the resolution?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention to Steve, Steve, I really admire you guys, our department. You are one step above. You know, you're moving forward. You know, that's what I watched the president's speech last night and vice president, task force, all this CDC personnel spoke, but you're beyond. You're one step above. To talk to this morning with chief, Cook, you know, I'll tell during the discussion time some of the things that you're thinking about, but I thank you guys. Thanks, Chief Danny and all, you guys working together and, you know, give the protection to our people. This is a very dangerous virus, and we are not taking it that serious.
Thank you.
I'd just like to echo Mr. Raj Kapal's remarks and just thank you guys so much for what you're doing, and please, please stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And if anybody has any questions or comments, direct them to Steve Khan. Is there any other discussion about the resolution? Or Jeff, did you have some additional comments?
So I was just going to offer some input to provide some perspective on what measures the township has already started to take, just in case there are questions at home. Some of this is memorialized in the resolution that is before you, certainly to the extent that there's anything that is not there or that is there that you all feel differently on. This would be an appropriate avenue to have that conversation, but some of the things that we've done to date, as we've worked with the YMCA to close the Senior Center for the foreseeable future, you know, based on the guidance that was provided by Governor Dewine and others prior to even today when they closed recreation facilities and things of that nature, we felt that it was the best thing to do given the potential for that subset of our population. And so we've been working with the Council on Aging and other groups to make sure that things like congregate meals can continue to move forward as they're supposed to, but that is one of the big things that was in here. We've also continued to have internal conversations about best practices to mitigate this situation. So we're being very diligent about washing our hands, not that we weren't before, but we're being extra diligent this time around. We're also encouraging residents to interact with us on an online basis if they can or to give us a call. Fortunately, we have a lot of infrastructure in place that not every community has. You're able to file zoning permits online without stepping a foot in the door. You're able to file code enforcement complaints. You're able to interact with us in a variety of forums, and so we are continuing to encourage that just to prevent the spread and as much foot traffic through the building during this time. We've also put temporary bans on travel that is not considered essential travel and training. And we've worked to pull together a community action plan that will hopefully be unveiled in the coming days. But outside of that, there are a few other items in the resolution, but I'm happy to entertain any potential changes that you may have, and I've got the resolution up in front of me and I can make those on the fly as needed.
We are continuing on the discussion on the
We're still discussing resolution, yes.
Resolutions, okay.
Before we vote, and this is just, in this case, we've taken some input from the fire department and from Jeff Weckbach.
Chief Cook, do you like to make any comments?
So, Captain Packer, Chief Khan.
Okay, good. Moving on, this resolution, by the resolution, Board of Trustee of Colrain Township declaring Colrain Township in the state of emergency.
Correct.
Okay? This need to be known to the township business and also to the residents. From today, we're declaring Colrain Township in the emergency, state of emergency based on the coronavirus in a spread. Keeping on the thing like that, one thing I, watching, you know, I watched the news from last night, the presidents and CDC people and also the vice president with the task force, leading the task force suppressing for the coronavirus issues. And they mentioned about the FEMA, they're going to take care of all the expenses. They're allowing have the government, the cities, even the municipalities can have a testing site. They'll pay for it. They pay for all the testing, testing and expense, anything go with the testing. So when I was talking to the chief this morning, I mentioned about what we have in Colrain Township, a testing center, either remote center or set up a tent or drive-through, something like that, and which will be paid by the FEMA. It won't cost any money to the township. So chief suggested that could be a good idea. He will talk to the health department people, essential people related to that area. So I'd like to see this happen soon as possible, Colrain Township, a testing site. People can drive through or stop by, have the testing done for the coronavirus. And also, I briefly mentioned, I also tried to reach Nora, who's liaison for the senior citizens, and it's very important that we need to take care of our senior citizens. And some of the people have access to, go to the doctor's office, go to the hospital. Some people may not have access. So what kind of alternatives they have could be, call the, call the us, township, or through the fire department, or through the AJO counseling. We have, make sure they will able to go to the doctor's office or the hospitals. Some people, they may not call 911, I don't know, and make sure we have contact with these people, they have access to get this treatment. Also, some of the people that volunteer, they call me, they email me, on the private email, that they like to volunteers the food distributions, the frozen food distribution for the senior citizens. Or we can have, they can call on the senior citizens what they're doing, how they're doing. Some people are lonely people, you know, they may not have some relatives, so these people need to be contacted. I got a few people volunteers say we will call, check on them. It's very important, we need to check on this, our senior citizens. So these are the things we can work out with our department. And again, so we are moving forward on this, and also I'd like to see our police department work cooperatively with the health department, make sure some of the business comply with the order of the health department, the order of the governor. So I'd like to see this happen and work closely with the health department. And the resolution I mentioned to Jeff Weckbach, they say the rental places, you know, our rental place, you change to from 100 to 50 people. I would like to see, recommend postpone all the events in the community center till the further notice, you know, till further notice we get from the governor. Right now, the governor is suspending any type of gatherings for more than 20 people or so.
I think that's pointed out in item five, Raj. It says the Colrain Township Senior Center shall be closed until further notice.
No, no, I'm talking about the rental.
Number six.
Oh, the community center.
So yes, I believe the most recent guidance from Governor Dewine was 50 individuals.
Did he change the one I read, it's about 100 people?
And we changed that wording to reflect the 50. Outside of that, I mean, we can, I mean, that's something for you all to discuss. If you want us to go out to anybody who has a rental that is planned and cancel those, we can work with them as well.
Yeah, I would like to cancel altogether till the further notice, not limit, not even limited to 50.
Okay.
It's up to the other trustees.
I would like to, if you look around this room, one of the things we've done in this room so we can continue our important trustee and zoning board meetings is we've done the spacing as recommended by the governor and by the Hamilton County Board of Health and the CDC. We've eliminated half the audience chairs so that we can continue to have meetings and go within those guidelines that come to us from the CDC and the Board of Health and the governor. The, some of these events have been planned for a long time. If the guidance is 50, I'm fine staying with 50. If the guidance that comes down from the state is 10, then I'm fine with 10, but right now the guidance is 50. We've accomplished that in this very room by eliminating half the chairs. And I would hope that our, is there, I don't go to zoning meetings for a reason because, you know, we're sort of the appellate level for that, but is there, are there zoning meetings scheduled the next two weeks?
Yes, there's actually a zoning commission meeting scheduled for tomorrow night. We've got several items on that agenda, at least one of them, I'm expecting it to be something that a lot of people are going to want to show up and talk about. And so, you know, to the extent, and it's not in this resolution, but that the board would like for us to either suspend existing zoning timelines or push back meetings or whatever that might look like, certainly that would, that would help. I know that I've been following what other communities are doing locally as well as others across the country. Everybody's taking a little bit of a varied response here. There's some guidance that came out from the Attorney General around what constitutes a meeting that may or may not still comply with the Open Meetings Act, and so, you know, whether that includes teleconferencing or live streaming, or if it includes canceling meetings entirely, those are certainly things that direction from the three of you would be greatly appreciated.
We see what's happening right now, that the long-term economic impact of what is happening here is going to be huge. If this was October or November versus being March or April and going into the construction season, I would think some of these zoning meetings, the people want to get their projects started, I'm afraid if we put these off till April or May or June, that the project will never get started and that'll be that many more people who are out of work or don't have an income. So I think working within the directive that we've received from the Board of Health and the governor, we're maintaining 50 people in this room, I would be in favor of keeping things rolling along because it takes time and people have a lot of money tied up in these, if somebody's trying to build a building or something and they're going before zoning first, I would really be inclined to follow the directives of the Board of Health and the governor and, you know, if it's under 50, fine, let's see what happens. I know, was there four items on the agenda for tomorrow night for zoning?
There's three or four, I don't know.
The one of them was Lake Gloria, yes, I do think that might draw more than 50, but speaking as one of the three of us, if the board, if the zoning board's able to get a quorum together, I would just assume they went ahead and kept those other two or three rolling because this is all going to just mess up a lot of people's businesses and their lives this year.
Sure.
Not, not having the continuation of business in the township.
And it also might make sense to go ahead and reach out to the applicants and see if they're willing to continue it, given the current status of things.
Right, but like you said, that's not part of this resolution, so, so is there, we can talk about that, and after we do this, amend the agenda so we can talk about that a little more if we need to. I've read through this and it does, and for those watching, it does say this ends in 30 days unless we renew it, and we have another meeting on April 14th is our regularly scheduled meeting, so, which kids should be 10 days back into school by then unless that is changed from April 3rd, I don't know. But this does end in 30 days and that'll give the board time to see how this is working, and we could always schedule another meeting if we had to with changes. That's, that's our job here is to try to keep the township rolling along. And I don't have any other comments specific to this, but I know there's another discussion item, so do you guys have any other comments specific to this?
I, go ahead, man.
Excuse me, yes, a couple of items. Mr. Raj Kapal talked about the rental, that the president actually said today, limited to 10 people. I, you know, as much as it is going to mess up people's plans, you know, I would tend to favor, and that was not the president speaking off the cuff as he often does, it was with the CDC there. So I would be open to something with, with dealing with that. Also, in terms of, in terms of, so we talked about the suspension of BZA and zoning commission, and if that's something that people want to go to, we can amend it. The idea of, I think it should be added that we follow the state and county orders. You know, I don't think that we need somebody kind of, that has a different agenda, you know, calling up department heads and saying, you know, hey, don't do this, do this. And I'd also like to see something that kind of, and the reason I want to do that is because it's so hard to call a meeting and to say, if there's been a new directive given that says, like today, close all gyms, you know, that's something that, you know.
If we need to revisit in the emergency ordinance?
I'd like to already have a default, that we default at the county and state directives on that. And there was, one of the questions too was, should this be amended to discuss the, an extension of the curfew or some kind of curfew with the mall? Or
I guess that would be the only place it would apply. My concern, and the mall was closed and it was open again, and that was the county. My concern is I don't want to have 50 students of whichever, from whichever school headed at the mall kind of congregating together just for a health concern. I mean, that kind of defeats the purpose of pulling them out of school if they all shift it to the mall. Now, I don't know if that's something that we're working privately with the mall with, or? Okay.
And I think that that falls under the keeping people six feet apart. I am not in favor of closing the mall. The businesses in there have it really tough right now, and this will do half, half of them in.
Right, I don't think I mentioned closing the mall. I mentioned a curfew for the students that would, that are out of school.
In 2007, the Board of Trustees
In in two thousand and seven, the Board of Trustees passed a resolution instituting a daytime curfew in Colrain Township. That's existed for the last thirteen years. What it says is when students are expected to be in school, if they are not in school, they are not to be out in public. So that that has existed for thirteen years. The mall has their own curfews, as do any business, they they have the right to impose whatever curfews they like. Violation of those curfews would result in us making a trespassing arrest at that point, not a curfew arrest. So if there were students at North Gate that were causing an issue and the mall decided that they wanted them to leave, or the mall had a curfew, our officer would arrest for a trespassing arrest, not not for a curfew. Now, out in the public, and you got to be careful because it has to be students who are required to be in school. We were given information early in the in the week that Northwest was going to undergo online learning, we found out that was not, that was incorrect. So our resolution does not apply to students who are not required to be online in school. So we have to be very careful on who we encounter and and what their requirements are for their district. So we, it makes it a little more difficult, but that's that's the state we're in. So if they were students from Elder, for example, that were required to be there and they would.
Eight to three.
They would be in violation of the of Colrain Township's daytime curfew, and they would be subject to arrest.
Well, it makes it pretty complicated.
It does make it very complicated, so our our goal is to get them back to where they're supposed to be. Arrest is your final answer to that, but I I think our our primary goal is to get them back home with their parents and explain the rules and make sure that they have an understanding of what our expectations are. But I've seen this online, this is not a new curfew that the board has passed, this is an existing curfew that's been in existence for thirteen years. So this is not in response to anything that's going on in the in the media right now, it's it's simply our ability to remind people that this is existing and that they need to comply with that.
What are your tools if you roll up anywhere? I don't know, um, uh, well, everything's close.
Um and see, you know, I guess the mall would be the only place that would left, maybe Meyer or Kroger, and see, you know, forty kids together. Is is it, we don't need a curfew to say, you guys need to?
Right, and usually the officers are very good at at having that contact and getting the point across and and making sure the kids go where they need to go. The curfew just gives us that tool in the end where if no one's complying with the officer's orders and the officer's suggestions, that we have an ability to make them do that at that point. But generally speaking, and and most of the kids in this community are very receptive to our officers and doing what they're told to do.
And and maybe that's something we could revisit if we find that it's an issue. Um I just want to keep that in mind, just, and and again, I don't care about where it's at, I care about the the health ramifications, and we know statistically that that, you know, that the students aren't going to get sick, but if they become carriers, it becomes an issue that of significant importance.
Hey, Chief, is the Kenwood Mall closed?
I don't believe any mall is required to be closed now. There was an order that came out this morning from the Board of Health, that was a cease and desist order for Northgate Mall, that was then rescinded about an hour and a half after, that the malls are still exempt of the governor's order, so there is no requirement that the malls be closed. And Northgate, I don't believe is going to be closed. In fact, in the interim between the cease and desist order and the removal of the order, there was a second order that came out that said that they had outward-facing stores that they were no longer required to close. So they, who's making the calls up there, I don't know, but that's all been removed and and the malls are exempt as of now, I expect that will probably change very soon. The mall was very compliant and ready to to completely comply with the governor's order, luckily they weren't, they weren't made to at this point.
And one of the things I pointed out at our at our regular trustee meeting last Tuesday, it it just so happens, the annual meeting of the Hamilton County Board of Health for the elected officials, I had attended that, and and they advised us what our what our annual rates are for their service. Um I believe there's two or three communities in Hamilton County, it'd be the city of Cincinnati, the city of Norwood, and and one other place, Springdale, they run their own boards of health. We subscribe to have the Hamilton County Board of Health handle these type of issues from us, so it'd be my recommendation that we follow the, what the Hamilton County Board of Health says, and and we stick with that. Um you know, one of the things that's not mentioned anywhere is I'm I'm fairly confident that that three and six months from now, there's going to be a lot of people who've lost deposits, who've had canceled contracts, there's going to be a whole legal component of this, of of lawsuits and everything else, and that's why it'd be my recommendation to follow what the Hamilton County Board of Health tells us, and let them take on, using their professional people that are well-schooled in these issues, following their guidance, that that kind of keeps us out of trouble, because it's only the job of the trustees to approve the financing for these things, and from where I'm sitting, I have to think about these things three and six months down the road of what what the township could be up against if we start interpreting different agencies above the Board of Health's desires, and so we need to kind of stick with what the Board of Health tells us. I I think that's what's in the Emergency Management Training Manual also, so um so are we changing something on here, or?
Yeah, uh, this type of emergency is different than any other emergency we went through in the history, okay? That's the one the president emphasized, the CDC people emphasized, the director of uh, uh, you know, what is that agency, he was there on the television also, uh giving all the experts, all the health experts was emphasizing this emergency now, it's never been happened, that the this coronavirus, the COVID nineteen spread so fast, it's unbelievable. That's why they were taking all the precautions measures to contain this. Only way they can contain this, to avoid the people gatherings as much as possible. They don't know who carries it, even the kids not, they won't get this disease, but they could be carrier when they go home, when the elderly people there, especially the people vulnerable, was the medical issues, sixty-five above, they are very, very receptive to catch that virus. That is important. That's unique about, very dangerous about this virus, and you have the the professionals there, they know more about this than I do, but what I know, what I'm watching, the televisions, all the doctors, health experts, presidents, vice presidents, everybody's talking about, governor, alerting, it's not a panic, it's a pandemic things issue. This is emergency. That's the reason the people are avoiding gatherings, any type of gatherings. And we're putting the people in jeopardy and heaving along them to come. We are not policing these people, how many people going to come and watch? The meetings, we don't know how many people going to come, the people, when you say the zoning meeting, everybody will come and see the meeting, the citizens will come there to address the issues, and we are really not putting a limit, we're not going to tell the people, hey, we're going to take only ten people, fifteen people to the, on the meeting. And we were five people already in the zoning commission, correct?
Yes.
And then, then their representatives from the business, and and also the people opposing this zoning will be there. We are, that's what the leaders, the the officials, governor onwards emphasizing that try to avoid as much as possible the guy, because of the the severity of this virus spreads so fast. Some of the people in our, in our township, they already carrying the virus, we don't know. They're walking around, they don't know, we don't know. Only know when they're completely diagnosed, I don't know, the people say it'll carry on a few days before they even know the, they had the virus. So that's what the governor, the presidents, vice president, the medical personnel, top people, CDC people telling, try to avoid any type of gatherings as much as possible. Let's do this. Let's let's take it very seriously, let not our township, me, one of the township, talk about, hey, Colrain Township got a numerous coronavirus, uh, people contacted. So we try to give the as much as protection to our people, that's our responsibilities. So I'm trying to emphasize, try to avoid as much as possible having people gathered. And you're putting not only the people coming there, we're putting all the zoning people, the zoning commission people in jeopardy, and the risk, you're putting them in a higher risk.
So you want to go beyond the recommendations of the governor and of the Board of Health? I would interpret that.
I wouldn't say that, you know, I I think taking precautions measures.
Well, sure, and that's.
Just like we said, we heard like, we go beyond one step ahead, try to stop this, try to, I won't say stop, contain this virus.
Well, the zoning meetings are not in this resolution, we just segged off into that conversation, is there, is there?
We brought it to the attention, right?
Yeah, right, but I mean, that's not in this.
We brought it to the attention, zoning meeting, so continue that. I think I I I read the opinions of the Attorney General, and and there's public meetings, and this kind of thing is, they have exemptions. This is emergency situation, guys, it's not something that we take it lightly.
So I'd like to make an amendment that will, I think, deal with some of these things. I'd like to add, after after um operational clause seven, I'd like to add an eight that that reads, and and you guys can maybe wordsmith this if you'd like, as long as the state of emergency is in place, comma, Colrain Township will follow all directives from the state of Ohio and Hamilton County.
And the federal.
Um, you know, yeah. And federal government.
You're going to get a lot of conflicting directives if you take all three of those. It says in the Emergency Management Manual that all disasters are are handled locally, and you reach out to these other organizations for guidance. In our case, we reach out to the Hamilton County Board of Health for guidance on on a biological issue such as this. I think that we're going to have a lot of confusion if we take everything the state and the fed and and as locally said, I I think we need to pick one of the three, I'd prefer locally, because, you know, things here in Colrain Township are different than in Cincinnati, are different than in Loveland, and I I don't so much want to cede control of any of this to to somebody else who might not have our particular best interest at heart.
So I I think as far as federal, as Mr. Raj Kapold noted, I think that the state and the county would pick that up as just a, as a function of federalism. So I, you know, if, for instance, if the federal government says A will happen, then all the states are going to say A will happen. I I don't know that 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 needs to be, uh, my intention, maybe it needs to be instead of directive by order. And the reason for that is the state of Ohio and Hamilton County, and Mr. Unger's right, they've, I don't know that they've not been, um, they've been conflicting, but they've been on different timelines. Um, and where the state is as far as, and where Hamilton County is, the state seems to be slightly ahead of that curve in their decision, and, you know, I I don't think that we've gotten anything that's that's been opposite from the state and the county. I think the county is more or less kind of a, uh, explained that. So maybe we change it to Coring, uh, as long as the state of emergency was in place, Colrain Township will follow all orders, and and that makes it more former?
Formal orders, directives, I I think Mr. Unger's right, sounds like somebody saying, hey, let's do this. And that's different than all, all restaurants will close. And that's pretty clear versus, hey, you know, it'd be nice if every public event was ten people or less. That's not really a, it's not an order, it's a.
So would you be okay with that we follow all orders from the Hamilton County Board of Health and let those professionals make the call for us because none of us are biologists?
Well, right, but I think that the state has that same, I I'd like to include the state of Ohio in there because I think they have the the same level of expertise, if not, if not higher.
You know, one of the things about Colrain Township is is we're a little bit different. We're not so much a tight walk to your building next door like downtown Cincinnati is. A lot of the people here are are spread out with with distance, and they're in their cars going places, and they're not walking or or generally using public transportation because we don't have the level of public transportation here that they have in the in the city of Cincinnati. One of the other things that makes us unique is we have our own police department, which is something I've always wanted to have, so we're kind of in control of our own destiny here. We have our our fire department with the stations placed where is best thought to be to serve the community. We have all the assets that that us and all the previous boards of trustees have have put into place for such a day as this. So I would prefer to to take our orders from, and it's, just like I said last week at our meeting, we just got our bill for the whole next year with the Hamilton County Board of Health. I think if we rely on their guidance, that could keep us out of a lot of trouble three and and six months and nine months from now, versus putting together a hodgepodge of of different things that we hear about from the federal or the state. I, if we just go on orders from the Hamilton County Board of Health, and then everything funneled through Steve Khan, that way we have a pretty clear, concise uh plan of action. If the Hamilton County Board of Health says says so, then then it is in an order. If if the state of Ohio comes up with something that really affects Chillicothe a lot differently than it affects Colrain Township, and I don't know what that is, but I would just as soon maintain some local control over this.
You know, the people in the Westchester thought the same way, who would think, Westchester is such a nice, high-profile place, and, you know, nobody will think people in the Westchester will have coronavirus. Now, before the cases. Now, when I was watching last night, um, the president, the vice president talking, they praised Ohio. You know what they said? Ohio is one step above what they're doing now. Our governor, Mike Dewine, is really doing a great job protecting, putting Ohio in the map, that we are, we are taking four more steps to protect our people getting this virus, try to contain this. I think we are set, we are setting an example, like, like, you know, I don't, you know, I would, I was shocked when I heard, you know, Westchester, people in Westchester got a virus, you know, it, this is more wider city than, wider place than Colrain. You know, this very fall apart, up upscale homes, shopping and everything, and who would think, clean city, and who would think? But, uh, you know, we can discuss this all night long, and what I I liked Matt, what Matt said, and amended what the state, uh, state and also federal government dictates or recommends to contain this virus, what type of measures we should take to stop the spread of this virus, to help our people, help our senior citizens, this is very important.
So I I want to be kind of clear about kind of the wordsmithing on this. I don't want recommends because I do think you end up with some mixed messages. Um, and and again, I guess at some point we'll just have to vote on the motion. I I see the state of Ohio and Hamilton County being applicable more, um, you know, because I don't, I cannot foresee a situation where the state of Ohio issues an order and the fire department or police department says, eh, well, we're really not going to do that.
I mean, I think that you would be legally bound, um, anyway, and that's, the reason I have this, this, I made this amendment is so that we won't have come, have to come back here when maybe the number changes from, and maybe we amend the one above from a hundred to fifty, and then three days from now, somebody says twenty-five, so that we don't have to come back to change that. That's kind of the, my my thought process in giving some administrative flexibility in order to, and and maybe there's a better way to do of doing that, but that's kind of my intent, is to make it so that you guys, the administration, can do, you don't need to come to us for every different change in this.
The, um, I would, um, right now, the guidance from the governor is what number?
I believe the last I heard this afternoon was fifty.
And if the president would change that and and put a recommendation out, that's one thing, but if the president would issue an order, then we would, then then the governor would issue that order to the, to the Hamilton County Board of Health, and that's how we would get it, and I think that's how it would flow.
Most likely, yes.
They, because the governor would say all county boards of health have to follow this order.
Sure.
It just separates the federal government from the.
The state.
State, and you don't get into a bunch of lawsuit constitutional issues um down the road three and six months from now. I just want to be clear on what we're, we're following.
Mm-hmm.
And I I think everything gets directed, there's a chain that goes from the fed to the state to the local board of, county board of health to us. So if we follow the county board of health, then we're following everything they've been told to do, and they've got the professionals on staff and the doctors and and educ, folks that are more educated on this than I, and um, that'd be my. And, um, that'd be my recommendation. So if you wanted.
I, I, um, Dan, you know, I understand where she's coming from. You know, we, we just saw that, big confusions. And the, the health department issued, okay, we're going to close the Northgate Mall. Then after an hour or so, come back. No, no, the state governor said, don't close it. So obviously, the health department, you know, I, we got the greatest health department, I agree, you know. But obviously, somehow, the connection went wrong, the, the communication went wrong. So we use the guidance of the governor. He's right now commander of chief, commander in chief in this time of emergency. He's a commander in chief in the state of Ohio. Whatever he orders, that we should follow. Now, we got a commander in chief in the country, our president, which supersedes everything. Okay, let's go with this, what the commander in chief tells us to do. We go from there. Let's use them as a guidance. What they, then, then again, we have the obligation, if these guys, they know the community, they know the residents, if they think something, we need to take one step above. Let them do it. They feel like it because they've been this community for 30 years, 40. They know this, they know the every part of this community. If they feel, make a, here's a governor's order, it's a, now I live this neighborhood. Let's, let's try one more step above. Give them a ability to do, enforce that.
If we, if we change it to 10, I believe that the childcare program over at the YMCA has more than 10. You know, you're going to be shutting down all these folks that are, that are nurses and, and medical personnel that have to have their, their kids in a daycare situation or there's all these kids out of school. If, if you limit that to more than 10, you're, you're closing daycares and schools and all sorts of things. And that's why, that's why this is all.
Exempted. There's like exempt, just like in hospitals, you know, how many nurses were? How many doctors there? How many people there in the hospitals? Are they going to limit those people? You know, there are certain things, it's necessity, you had to do. Some things are not necessary, not necessity. If that's not that necessity, you know, let's, let's follow the guideline. Because all, all we all fighting, everyone of these guys here, all be fighting to, to spread that. You know what I'm saying? It's all part of the thing, spreading the virus, protecting our citizens. It's all common thing. So it takes one person to go to the one place, spread the virus. Next thing you know, and we got it. That's, that's my opinion. That's my.
And I, I would, you've just made me think of something, Raj. Those, those four folks in, in Westchester that did get diagnosed with the vi, the virus, uh, they were sent home, just to sit it out. That was the extent of the treatment, and that's what I heard in the media. So, um, I mean, they're not, they, they were sent home like, like most patients are. The elderly and those that are in compromised medical, um, have more of a chance of being more greatly affected by this. And I'm not a doctor or biologist, but what you, you did bring up the four in Westchester, and they were looked at and, and sent home, so.
I'm, I'm so glad that the people are safe, but, you know, thank God, these people are safe. And, but we don't want to take, take a chance. That's all, all, all of us who work here. We don't want to take a chance. If even one senior citizens in our community get ill, something happened to them, then we will be grieving for that person.
So let's just put this up, my, let me reintroduce this, as I kind of changed it.
Oh, you're introducing it now.
Yeah, well, okay, Corrine Township, uh, as long as the state of emergency is in place, comma, Corrine Township will follow all orders from the state of Ohio and Hamilton County would be, uh, the amendment I'd like to make under Bullet Point 8. And let me just ask Mr. Solomon, uh, does it matter that we have state of Ohio and Hamilton County?
And put also federal.
What do you mean, does it matter?
Uh, is it, I mean, uh, Mr. Unger's maintaining that Hamilton County will cover anything that the state of Ohio says. Generally, they should, but I, I don't know that they.
I was actually thinking that myself. I'm not familiar. Has Hamilton County been coming out with orders? I know that the state has made some executive orders. I don't know.
I don't think Hamilton County said orders. I think they've given.
Yeah.
Guidance.
Yeah.
I think Hamilton County was told to close the restaurants. And so Hamilton County would be the agency that would, the Hamilton County Board of Health would be who is implementing that.
But I guess, did they issue their own individual order?
The state issued that order, the county.
I think the county follows the orders that are issued by the state generally.
Yeah.
And that we would follow what's issued by the county.
Well, the county didn't issue anything, they enforced it.
They enforced, yeah. I think the order comes from, when the governor makes an order, I think the entire state is obligated to go ahead and respond to that and take action.
So make your resolution.
Um, Bullet 8, as long as state of emergency is in place, comma, Corrine Township will follow all orders from the state of Ohio and Hamilton County.
Also include that federal government from the.
I'll second it as before the federal government was put in it.
Okay, so now if Mr. Raj Kapol wants to make an amendment to the amendment, he would then introduce that amendment as, he wants to add federal.
Well, let's go ahead and vote on yours, and then we can vote to add federal.
Okay.
So read it again.
Um, Bullet Point 8.
Two amendments, right?
What?
Two amendments according to Dan.
Well, you'll need to.
You'll need to amend this amendment.
Right, that's one.
Number 8, as long as the state of emergency is in place, comma, Corrine Township will follow all orders from the state of Ohio and Hamilton County.
And I, I seconded that. So is there any discussion on that?
No.
No.
So to add Matt's Point 8 to this, Heather, please call for a vote.
Mr. Raj Kapol?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Now, did you want to introduce another amendment, Raj?
I, I did the same thing, and adding, uh, the, the order from the, how do you put? The president or the, from the government of the United States. You know, I would, I would say from the president. Or from, or from the federal government.
Is there a second?
What, I guess, what is the motion?
So the same motion you put, that we are adding that the federal government.
I am not going to second that. If you want to second it, Matt, um, you can, but I'm not going to.
I would send, if you want to put like a, from the president.
Yeah, I, uh, Mr. Raj Kapol.
Either way you can put, the federal government.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of that because I think that that's covered under the state of Ohio. It's a basic function of federalism that, that if the president does an executive order, the state has to follow. It's, and that's, my concern is getting, is getting folks confused by, and we have a president who, who talks a little bit off the cuff sometimes, has been known. And, and my concern is him saying something like, hey, it should be 10 people, and people misinterpreting that and causing a, a lot of confusion among our citizens and, and among everyone, I think. That's my concern. Mr. Wackley, sorry.
I'm not going to second it either because I'm way too much of a 10th Amendment guy to have the federal government come in and then tell us our business. So, um, if he orders the states to do that, then the state orders us. Um, that's the way it's going to flow, but I'm, I am not, um, the states have their, unless it's specifically outlined in the Constitution, um, then, then it's a matter of the states of how to proceed with things like this. So I'm not going to second it either. And are you going to second it?
No, for the reasons I indicated.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there?
I have another amendment, Chair.
Okay.
On number 6, change 100 people to 50. With, now that we've passed number 8, if the governor changes it by decree, this will automatically change, um, and we won't need to come back and revisit that.
I will second changing it to 50. Is there any discussion on changing that number to 50 people?
None for me.
So you're going to add, if the governor changes it below 50, we need to go. Okay, you're going to, it's, is there any word in the resolution?
That's already covered in what we just passed. Yeah, absolutely.
Is there any other, so you motioned, I seconded. Is there any other discussion?
None.
Hearing none, Heather, please call for a vote on, on number 6, would read 50 people.
Mr. Raj Kapol?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
The, I don't know what the most recent update is on when the governor directed kids to stay out of school until April 3rd. I don't know if that, if the governor's issued, now that we're at this point, I don't know if the governor's issued an order changing that.
I'm not sure that it's been a, a formal order, but I think there was some statement in his press conference that it's likely going to extend to a longer timeframe.
But right, but as of this moment, it's still April 3rd. Until we hear, but if we hear differently from the state, then that Mr. Waller's, uh, motion covers that. I'm just looking at, be it further resolved that the state of emergency, so, so end in 30 days. If we approve this tonight, that would mean this would end on April 16th or 15th, because that's 30 days from March 16th, because March has 31. The, um, so I guess I'm fine with that because that way we can address it at our next meeting, which is two days before the end of this.
Sure.
When is our, our next meeting is the 14th?
April 14th.
It's Tuesday. Yeah, so we would have time to address that change at that time.
Let me, let me ask one thing. I want to ask experts, uh, sitting there. If we don't follow the federal guidelines, say for example FEMA under the federal guidelines, so would we still get the, any monetary funding? We had to follow the, say FEMA is going to pay for the, all the expense, which is under the federal government. If you follow certain guidelines and rules, will we still able to get the funding from them?
I don't know that that's covered in this.
Let, let Chief, he's expert. He can tell, tell us.
Well, sir, I'm far from a, an expert, but, uh, you know, without some research, I, I cannot, uh, give you a solid answer as to what position we'd be in if we don't follow federal guidelines throughout this pandemic.
I don't, I don't know that there's anything in, in the resolution as it's written that challenges the federal guidelines. I mean, if, if FEMA tells us we have to do something, that's not covered in this. I just, I expect the whole purpose of this is so that we'd be able to apply for, for federal funding. Uh, for instance, if we need to go out and get 10,000 test kits, that's a, related to a declaration of emergency, and then we would apply to get some or all of that money back we spent on the test kits. And I don't know that they're in 100% reimbursement anyway. You don't have the check until you have the check. So.
What, what I seen, Dan, that's what's been, they, they promising. They were encouraging the local people to, if, if even they want to have like a test site, they will pay 100%. I don't know, you watched the, the speech last night? This is a task force created by the president, and vice president head the task force, which contains the CDC people and also from other medical HHS. You know, uh, this, this, all the, uh, federal health organizations, agencies, combined together under the one leadership, which is called Task Force, to fight this coronavirus. They're doing anything possible to help the local government, you know, to contain this virus.
I don't think there's anything here that challenges that.
You know, what you seen, what you heard, I don't know, I cannot argue with you. But what I seen, these are the promise they made to us, go and fight.
But this, I think the supremacy clause of the US Constitution takes care of that by saying that the federal law is the supreme law of the land. For instance, we can't pass a law in, in Ohio that says that now, um, I don't know, that, use an example, that child labor is okay. Uh, the, the federal government would intervene and say that you can't do that. We have federal rights there because of the supremacy clause and, 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 um, interstate commerce and things like that, so.
I, I don't know. I, I'd have to study that a little more. It, it seems that the, all the states have, have different marijuana laws than the federal, federal law. So I don't, I don't know that that supremacy clause rules in any of this, that the states, going back to my, my 10th Amendment, the states will do what the states are to do. And unless it's specifically outlined in the Constitution, then the, the state's rights would be to run things. Now that said, as far as, back to Raj's point about FEMA, I, I don't see anything in here. And I expect that there's a list of stuff that FEMA would approve.
Yeah, I think just because it's not included, the federal portion of this is not included in the statute, doesn't mean we can't adopt it and, and eventually do that type of stuff.
I mean, I expect that your purpose is you're going to ask us to approve this, and then, you know, you start putting together the list of things that we're going to ask for reimbursement on.
Correct. So we've already started to have those conversations about, you know, tracking time and overtime and supplies and various things that we're going to be purchasing in response in anticipation that as federal dollars come available, we will be able to apply for reimbursement for all of those items.
Right, and I would expect you to keep the board of trustees updated on that. And you said, hey, we, we had an extra 200 hours of overtime last month with the fire department. We're going to try to bill that to FEMA, and because we've passed this resolution, we'll, we'll bill that and hopefully they'd approve it and, and pay it. But I don't see anything in here that stops us from, from billing, from, you know, submitting an invoice to FEMA and seeing if we can get paid, so.
It's a broad spectrum, you know?
Chief, I seem to remember when we had the tornadoes several years ago, that we had to pass a special separate resolution to request the FEMA reimbursement. So I'm wondering if that sort of process would happen again.
You know, it, it's a lot of guidelines applies to the, the protection of this, the personnel, the, the first responders, if, if something happened to them, you know. But this, this are thing, I don't know. We had to watch what's going on, the, from the federal law to the state law, that's very important. Go ahead.
And I think we are, and this is a 30-day resolution and, and, um, and, uh, there's nothing on here that, that addresses us applying for FEMA reimbursements.
Correct.
So we can go ahead and, and do that. And like you said, you, you're already putting together how much time we're spending on it, including this meeting, so. I don't have any other discussion unless you guys have another point. And we can go on to the next agenda item after we approve or don't approve this, if we can get a majority vote for it.
I, I am concerned, and I don't know where I, I don't have a predisposed belief on this. I am concerned about the DZA and the zoning boards, especially with regard to Lake, Lake Gloria, which I think will draw us to capacity. So I, I think we need to either discuss of putting those off or enforcing the, enforcing the 50 limit, which is going to not make people very.
I think we should probably pull the Lake Gloria off, but I don't think the other ones are going to draw that. And I guess if they did, the fire department could shut down the room, just like if they went into a place that was over fire capacity. So, um, Scott, would you know anything about that?
Uh, I, I would just say, just to the effect, if, if it were suspended, I don't think there'd be any issue there because obviously, like Captain Packers, that we're, we're facing unprecedented time right now and, um, emergency. I mean, the health and safety of the people would trump any required, um, you know, deadlines and what.
Sure. Well, and I, Matt, I'd be happy to amend the agenda to discuss that, but that's not part of.
But we can also amend this resolution to include that.
Well, I think in the overall purpose was to address what actions that was going to be taken by as a result of the COVID-19. So I think that would fall in, in, into the spectrum, the scope of what is being discussed today.
See, see, if I understand you, Dan, so you want to have a zoning meeting postponed, or you want to keep as scheduled, or?
I want to keep.
postpone it for one month, until next month.
I want to keep business rolling along because we've talked about the COVID disaster. The economic disaster is something that's going to be with us for a year after this, at, at a minimum. Yes, if the Lake Gloria zoning hearing is going to, is going to bring this room over capa, over the 50 capacity, then, and I, I anticipate that it would because there's a lot of neighbors that want to have a say on that. We could pull that part of it out, but I, I think there was two or three other little things on that agenda that, do you know what they are off the top of your head?
Yeah, I believe the other two items are a text amendment to allow for food truck, and then there's a text amendment to allow for.
Wine.
Yeah, it's essentially wineries.
And if we put off the food truck thing for a month or two, then that's not going to come together for this summer.
It still could. I mean.
I mean, it's. I mean, it's, I'd rather, if somebody has to go out and order equipment and get it all moving, I'd rather tell them that in March than in June, so.
Okay. I mean, we will, we will do what you guys direct us to, certainly, you know, if we are going to open ourselves up to public comment, we have to understand that that means that we would have multiple people addressing the BZA and/or zoning commission all from the same dais, so we would need to make sure that we're doing whatever we can to sanitize that space, probably between speakers and all these other things, thereby potentially exposing whomever is here to sanitize after each thing. Or, you know, we may just be in a situation where people don't show up. I don't know what the crowd might look like for either of those situations, so, just something to, to keep in mind in terms of health and safety.
I would, I would recommend that we postpone the meeting, all of them, at least for a month. I don't think, I don't think so they'll, they'll create such an economic disaster here in Colrain Township.
I think it'll only last until the state of emergency, right? So it'd be 30 days.
30 days.
Unless you guys extended it.
So this state of emergency with 30 days.
When we get to that, I will second that as a motion, so I promise you, you'll get a discussion on that, but should that, can that be independent of this motion?
I guess it could be, but if it's an action that's being taken in response to COVID-19, I think it, it falls well within the scope of this motion.
We can vote on this motion and then vote on amending this motion.
So if you want to make a number nine?
Exactly. I think it would, to me, that would be the logical thing to do.
So if you want to make a motion for, because we already added point eight, if you want to add point nine, Raj, of, of suspending zoning meetings until, can we do that, or is the zoning its own deal that should be suspending our own meetings?
Still falls within the scope of the township, and I think that, given the fact, for the public health and safety, it's clear there's a basis for.
We were clear about that, that it wasn't them, but it would be us that would do that.
No, they are, they don't, no.
The OTA gave guidance on this, and said that while they've not recommended that people postpone these, that would certainly be within the jurisdiction of, of the health and welfare of the people. And I could just check their website today, specifically for the BZA and zone.
So if you want to, so that would be up to you to motion to suspend those for the length of the emergency, if you want to motion for that.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to suspend the meetings till the, our emergency is ceased.
I'm, I'm not going to second it.
I will second it.
It's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
So we're talking about putting this off just for the length, I, I tend to think that the length of the emergency is going to go longer, which means that, but we can revisit the, the zoning and, I mean, if this goes into July, I mean, I think Mr. Unger's got a very valid point, that, that we've now, in a, in a really, really precarious economy, pushed off some development, but we could say after 30 days, all right, we're going to have to start having these meetings again, and we can take that out or do whatever, is that right?
Well, I, yeah, I think you could address it and, and however you want, and then in the next meeting, you know, obviously, there's different points, you know, that I've, obviously, you know, trying to flatten out the curve, obviously, you can do that in the beginning of this epidemic as opposed to at the end. So there's different points, I think you can readdress that, yes.
Okay, because I, I've heard from a number of, number of medical sources that we're in a pretty important time this week to 10 days. Does that confirm what?
The next two weeks will really give us an idea of the impact of this. Can't emphasize enough, I know that, that the story of the four people released, that's, that's great, that, that shows 80% mild symptoms, but if we allow the infection rate to get above what is manageable by our hospitals, this is, the official name is SARS-CoV-2, severe acute respiratory syndrome, lower respiratory infection and, you know, complications. The problem is the hospitalizations, and, you know, the, the critical treatments, respiratory ventilators. We're receiving multiple emails, conserve our personal protective equipment due to national shortages. So I can, I mean, like I say, right now, we are preparing, planning out, you know, right now, let's say, three months. So, I mean, that's kind of where we're at. Nothing's obviously official, but we can see what the trends in the CDC guidelines, extending eight weeks, so, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So.
Thanks, Captain.
Board, if you would like to double check the number nine that I wrote there, to make sure that captures the motion that Mr. Raj Kapol introduced.
And I'll also say that I know that, that with respect to the OMA, I mean, there might be issues or orders issued by the Attorney General with respect to how future meetings are conducted. Maybe, you know, only one of the three members is required here, and the other two can participate via telephone, so there's other options in the future too, that we'll get more clarification on, because things are happening so fast, it's hard for everyone to kind of keep up and stay on the same page.
Yeah, I like the idea of a 30-day, or whatever it is, Mr.
Are there, are there any of the, are, I know you don't have this in front of you, but these people that have paid for, for permits and zoning meetings and that, is there anybody that's going to, because of our statutory timelines on this, that's going to lose the money they've paid to be a, a part of this and have their presentations together and that, or?
I think that typically it's just an initiation fee, is, was, that's the only money that's, that's put out and, you know.
We can, we can, you exemption, they extended because of the emergency situation we are in. You have the authority to, to extend that time.
And it may be good to clarify that and button that up in this language, just to cross our teeth and dot our i's.
And it happens all the time where there'll be a discussion at the BZA, for instance, where additional information might need to be presented by the applicant to the zoning, you know, to the, the staff, who gives it then to this, you know, to the, the actual BZA. So those are continued all the time, so it's, this is not unlikely. I mean, continuances are not an anomaly with respect to the zoning commission and the board of zoning commission.
You know, I, I can understand Mr. Unger's concern, the economy and all that. Look at, look at stock market, last week about, oh, close to about 5,000 went down.
Uh, 10. It's down 10.
You know, Friday went down, Thursday about 2,000, close to 2,000.
Friday it went up 2,000.
No, no, Thursday, Thursday, went up, then again, went up, went down, today, almost like a 2,500, you know, it, it's, it's a national thing, it's everywhere, the economy is, but because of the virus. But then again, the people are more important, the lives are more important.
My concern is your, your, you said it's food trucks and the, the guy with the winery stuff. And then the bigger one is the development.
Yes.
So he's liable to miss the construction season, which is fine, it'll, the place has been empty for 20 years, he might pull his, we couldn't, I'm, I'm not in favor of having that one anyway, because that's going to draw more than 50, and that would cut us outside of the, the guy, the order from the state, so. So to Raj's motion, which was seconded by Matt, to that language, did you want to add something that any fees would be, do we need to add that, or?
I don't know that we need to address fees at this time. I think we're okay on that matter.
So when these guys gets bumped and comes back in April, he won't have to pay something else?
Don't believe he does.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on that item?
No.
Raj?
Oh.
Heather, please call for a vote.
Mr. Rush McHale?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
Mr. Waller?
Aye.
Is there any other amendments to this resolution for consideration?
None. I'd like to bring the resolution declaring a state of emergency due to COVID-19 as amended, is amended three times to the floor for.
For vote. And do we need to second that, Scott?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so as amended, so the first resolution to approve it with amendments, because we already motioned and seconded to get it to the floor at the beginning of this conversation.
To be safe, I would go ahead and make another motion with all the amendments.
Well, Matt motioned and I, I will second. So with the amendments adopted already, is there any other discussion?
None.
I, then again, I want to thank our first responders, all of you guys taking a marvelous step to protect our people. Thank you.
And I would just mention that this would be in effect for 30 days after passage, which would be April 15th. We have another regularly scheduled meeting April 14th, so we would be able to either extend this again or let it, let it sunset.
Correct.
And once again, I would, I would just like to state that there's one person speaking for this township on these issues, and it's Steve Kahn. Anything else you read anywhere else, or you are told by somebody else, Steve Kahn is our PIO, as designated in our Hamilton County Emergency Management, and Steve Kahn is the person to deal with these issues, and I have no other comments.
None.
And if you want to call for a vote, Heather.
Mr. Rush McHale?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
And Mr. Waller?
Aye.
The motion carries as, as amended. So the next item would be, Matt Waller has, wants to have a discussion of volunteerism opportunities.
So I've gotten, and Mr. Raj Kapol indicated too, and I'm sure Mr. Unger has too, a outpouring. It's actually kind of the silver lining in all this. I've gotten an outpouring of people that are like, almost frustrated that they want to help right away, and I think the governor answered a similar question, or it might have been Mayor Cranley today, about, hey, you know, stick with us, we need to figure some stuff out first, but I thought it would be valuable to have the discussion to, to have, instead of, I mean, we have two or three people that have already put together new Facebook groups, but I, going with Mr. Unger's kind of, you know, one voice kind of thing, I think it would be effective if we kind of came up with some type of, some type of way that we can harness all this, because people do really want to help, and we do have people that, that, that need help. I mean, we just, talk about, for instance, the Kroger closing down in Mount Airy, or the, I always call it the Mount Airy Kroger, I guess it's the, the lower Colrain Kroger, but a lot of those folks would walk to that store, Colrain residents, and now they're kind of stuck, the store's closed, and where are they going to go? You know, and if, I think it was, I'm losing track of who said what, but it might have been the governor today that said if you're over 65, you don't go out at all. It was in one of, maybe the governor, maybe Mayor Cranley, but either way, these folks, I think, need help, and we have people that are willing to help them, but I think it needs to be vetted. We can't have, we can't have a bunch, we can't unknowingly kind of spread this virus through volunteerism, so I, I guess my concern was, we need a process, we need a way to kind of go through here and, and harness the people that do want to volunteer, because they're out there, and we need them, and, and that's a big concern. So I, that's kind of my broad thing, I, I don't know, I don't know where it goes from there, but I think it's important enough to have the discussion, because I've had so much contact from people regarding that.
I don't know who handles the grocery and meal delivery for the, for the YMCA, but you, you mentioned Nora calling you before, but I did talk to her on the way up here.
Oh, you did have phone.
And she has, she, I would recommend that you contact her as far as getting people hooked up with who can help who. I know that she put together a list of, of, of our Colrain Township residents who, who she, who, who she organizes food deliveries for, and, and she was telling me some of these folks are, she has a guy that runs around, does her weekly shopping form, and for folks that need that, that type of service, and I will, I will pass her number along to you, you might get, allow her to organize that, because she kind of has something, with respect to the groceries anyway, organized through, through the YMCA and Council on Aging programs. As far as anything else that, that people would need, there's, why am I drawing a blank? The, or people working cooperatively and, and different other volunteer organizations that, that you could channel those, those efforts to, that, so that would be my comment, whatever, Raj, do you have a comment?
I, I totally agree with you guys. I got the same thing, we got a lot, a lot of volunteers. I think our township now, we experiencing that, that kind of unity, of people helping, they're coming together in, in the, in the happy time and the sadness, you know, we all see that, we've seen it, last year, of people, we, our whole community coming together. I think we should keep that, keep that spirit up, and, and let's, let's encourage the people to come. I also urge our residents, please check on our senior citizens, call them if they need any help, or anything they can do, how they doing it. If you know any citizens up there, you know, or closely know, make a phone call, see if they need any help. It'll make a lot of difference in our community. And, and I like that, Matt, and, you know, we, we should strongly build in the volunteerism.
And I can get you contact information for, for some of those services. I was in kind of a unique position, and I believe I was, that Heather was on that group for a while, the Tax Review Committee, and we got to know everybody in all those agencies through, through that, because the county provides funding for them, and I, I think that's marvelous that, that you're receiving those kind of contacts from people that want to step out and help. There's all sorts of churches and, and different folks that are, that are, that are participating in that, and I know even the Greater Northbrook Group is, is out helping out, out people, and, and I, I think that's marvelous, so.
I just want it to be kind of a, a systematic effort, is my concern, instead of a bunch of, I, so is, I, I don't know, there's Nora from YMCA, YMCA, is she, you know, she's a contact for food and groceries. The other thing is, I don't even know what we need volunteers for, yet, I mean, I don't think anyone knows.
Correct. I think, you know, I, from my experience, the residents of Colrain care, they care very deeply about one another. I think we've got some of the best residents that I've seen, they're always willing to help. Internally, we've had some conversations, we don't know that internally we're ready for volunteers just yet. We will certainly communicate to the right individuals when we are, but the message that I would like to share is, you know, continue to keep in mind your neighbors, be a good neighbor, help them where you can, provide that phone call, like Raj said, to a senior citizen, or to a loved one, just to check in and see how they're doing, because we all may be at different states of mind as it relates to this, and while it may not be organized volunteering, that level of volunteering does matter, and it does make a difference to the people in our community. But I can offer that we will continue to keep our eyes and ears open, and to the extent that we know of volunteering opportunities that are, are needed, we will, we will work with, with our community to allow for that to happen.
So your recommendation is, I get back to people, I say, look, keep in mind your neighbors, your family, let me have your contact info, we really need kind of the dust to settle a little bit before we. The other thing I've heard, and I guess I would assume this is right, is that they're low on blood donors.
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry.
I got a call a couple days ago asking for more blood, so.
We're, we're trying to get it all out of you, Jeff.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, so I will pass that on, and I will keep that list, and when you're ready, you let me know, and I'll give you the list.
We will let you know.
I would just like to ask about one other thing. So we, we've had this meeting tonight, and I, there's nothing else on the agenda, if the trustees would need to meet again.
Yes.
Just to, just to pull some dates out of you guys, let's say we had to meet, because this is a rapidly evolving situation, and, and would you guys be available? I'm not, we're not scheduling a meeting, but what is your, what do you look like next Tuesday?
Oh, that's another emergency meeting?
If we would have to have one.
I think Dan's just trying to get a pulse for how available you all are.
We'll go day by day, situations, you know.
I'm in my office teaching from my computer, so I can make any, my plans have cleared up for a long time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm available anytime, but if we would have to meet next week for, for whatever reason, I, I'm available. Are you in town next week, Raj?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in town.
Okay.
Like, like, let's go by the situation that, what's going on. Okay, let's, let's go from there, okay? Like, say, our, our safety is, safety of the people is more important, and we are there anytime we need it. Okay, all right.
Well, with, with nothing else, the only thing left to do is, is actually sign this resolution and, and give it to Heather. So with that, let's just sign it while we're still in open session here.
As we're signing that, thank you, Mr. Unger, Mr. Raj Kapol, Mr. Weckback, Mr. Solman, Chief Denny, Mrs. Harlow, and the fire that just left, thank you for, it's, this is a, man, this is emotional, it's, it's.
I'm trying not to wipe my eyes, but I have like.
Okay, so Raj signed under my name.
Oh. I scratched you, my name put your name on it.
Scratch that out.
Yeah.
I did just print another copy.
Did give me, you actually gave me a second signature page, Heather.
We'll get a new signature page if you can all keep a safe distance and follow me to the computer.
Once we adjourn.
Okay, so with, with, with no other, with no other business before us, I'd ask for a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
It's been motioned. It's been motioned and seconded, is there any discussion?
None.
Hearing none, this meeting, call for a vote, Heather.
I'm sorry, my computer's not cooperating with things. Mr. Rashid Capel?
Aye.
Mr. Unger?
Aye.
And Mr. Waller?
Aye.
And this meeting is adjourned at 7:30 PM on Monday, March 16th, 2020.